All right, it's now one o'clock and the call is made in order, if you all please join me. I'm trying to play. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for the great and just. Thank you, and now if I can have the committee along with our fire coordinator, Don Forbes, please join us in the legislative chambers for your ten leadership.
Is that a lot of smoke or something down the hall?
Hope not.
Just saying.
Did you find out when you were out?
Why not?
No numbers?
No numbers, I don't know.
That'd be a perfect 911 number in campaign time. We should do that.
Yes, you should.
Well, right now, but...
We should make a resolution, you have to have numbers on the outside.
There is, there's a 911 law, yes.
And they should have them, not even on their mailbox.
Yep, and those two, let's see, what's supposed to be, has to be on the residence itself, and then it also has to be on the driveway if it's more than 50 foot from the road.
Yeah, not only so the ones that, you know, light up or fall in the dark.
But we do the same thing. Yeah, I was gonna say.
We've got one around town up in Parish that did that years ago.
Yep.
But I got so frustrated, and then when you get there, the people are neat and they're not who you think they are, but I'm a conservative, you're saying the same thing. No.
What am I saying? Who are you? Boy, I'm pretty sure, what's a legislator?
What's a legislator?
It was Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to have a fundraiser down there.
Congratulations.
Which fundraiser? You get a call.
It's the Town Liberty Shit Place. It's a...
All right, following the meeting back into order here, I would like to excuse legislator Castilla, he had some medical issues this morning. Moving right along, approval of the minutes from the March 4th meeting. Motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Trudell on the additions to elections correction. Hearing non-involvement, say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. I'm going to go out of order a little bit, we have a 911 director who has to get to a statewide meeting, so I'm going to take everything pertaining to 911 and move it to now in the agenda. So first would be Resolution PS4, which is authorizing the creation of one position, deletion of two positions, and the 911 department. Kevin?
All right, so as I'm ready to wear, 911's a pretty technical department. Since I've come on board, I'm lucky to have the background as technical as I am, however, it's really taking a lot of toll with the technical advances on that department scene. On my time and efforts, I'm really spending more time down in the weeds, working on actual, you know, issues, and trying to change programming and software, CAD software, programming modems, mobile data modems, reprogramming radios, stuff along those lines. So I have a need for a 911 communications technician that I'm requesting to create, it needs to be a new position for the department. What I have also is two part-time positions that have not been filled since I've been appointed, and those positions, part-time is very difficult in our department to fill. It's hard to find people that want to spend six months straight training, every day to just come in and work, you know, 20 hours a week, which we have some benefits, which is better than some other part-time positions, but it's difficult to find people that want to work the different hours and different shifts that we ask our part-time people to work. So looking to delete two part-time positions from my current budget and add the 911 communications tech position, which would be a full-time, 40 hour a week, also on-call position to the budget. The overall impact is, let's see here, at the bottom of my list here. I think it was 18,000, but due to savings already in the budget this year from the two part-time positions that haven't been vacant, there won't be a, there's no budget modification request at this time.
You entertain a motion to approve. Motion by legislator Kessler, second by legislator Chesbrough, discussion, legislator Lockwood.
I have a question, don't we have a maintenance or agreement for repair and stuff on that?
On some of the stuff, yes, the more detailed stuff, the radio system, the CAD system, we have remote access, but as far as the configuration, resetting of passwords, going out, configuration, you know, configuring modems, stuff along those lines, as well as the intricate stuff that, you know, is specific to how a street county operates, that's the stuff that they don't really get into, they kind of more leave us on our own to try and work through that.
Okay, now, are they available? I mean, are they closed by, or is it something that you would have to know how to touch?
The vendors, well, right now we have an issue with the CAD where it's not sending out completed reports that we've been working on, and they're in Salt Lake City, so we can't start troubleshooting that issue until 11 o'clock today, where my communications tech would be, would have been working on it probably the majority of the week, can't figure out what we had going on until we had it resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Legislator Klein.
Kevin, these two part-time positions that have not been filled, obviously, you know, 160 hours, 68 hours a week you gotta cover people.
Yep.
Period. And I don't know how many you have per shift, three I believe, or four at least?
Uh, we're minimum of five.
Five, okay.
Yep.
How are we covering these hours now?
Well, we have, we do have four other part-time positions that are in the budget currently, and those cover times a little more busier than normal, they help cover vacations, sick times, stuff along those lines, we try to hit those people first. They have normal days that they're scheduled for two shifts, which would give them, well, actually, sorry, it's one shift a week, but they're normally scheduled for it for 12 hours, and then we fill in the other eight as needed.
All right, so essentially, you need the time, there's no long way around, because there's that number of hours in a week.
Yes.
How is this gonna affect, I understand your need for additional technical work, I get that, I wish you built it in your budget last year, which you didn't. What's the plan to throw these hours? I mean, if we're still paying double hours, eventually you have to put full-time people in or whatever.
Well, that's, when we're at normal staffing, seven per shift, which is what we are budgeted at, and then the four part-times, that is really, it's enough to cover us without, with minimal overtime. I mean, sometimes you have two people that take time off and the time that you can't cover with a part-timer, but, I mean, really, the day-to-day business, we are covered when we're at full capacity. The whole thought process with this is that this person that I'm hoping to be able to put into this position is currently a telecommunications, which would move up, and we're going to be hiring four new position, full-time positions here shortly, to fill the vacancies that we currently have. So in a few months, we'll be back to seven on each of the shifts with the four part-timers. So we should be in pretty good shape.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? We're done?
I'd just like to say that this is something that I think I support 200%, it's something that's really been needed for a long time. We talked about it when Mike Allen was here, there's just so much going on, and things that we need, that on the fireside, need to be changed or fixed, sometimes are not a high priority, and they go for a long time, because Kevin can't get to it, he doesn't have anybody else to do the technical side of it. The issue he mentioned with closeouts going out, this has been going on since mid-week last week, but it stalled over the weekend, because the only one he's got to work on is the contractor from Salt Lake, and that would have been a lot of money for over the weekend. So just things like that, really need somebody to focus on with the system we have setting.
Does that bother with the sheriff's department or the state police?
It actually affects all of our end-users, yeah, definitely all of our agencies that we service.
Thank you.
All right, hearing no other questions, non-involvement, say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. We're getting right along to your bid report, we have a bid report that came back on preventative maintenance inspection of the generators for our 911 communication dollars.
So all of our power sites have backup generators, they run off of battery power, but AC power is converted to the batteries, so that way we have a full, complete backup. And then obviously, if we lose local power with the power going out, then it switches over to a backup generator. We've had a ongoing preventative maintenance and inspection of generators contract that we put out for service for two preventative maintenance services a year, and want to continue that going forward, so we put that out for bid, we received nine responses. The low bid was actually our existing contractor that the contract was acquired on yesterday, so I'm suggesting that we continue with that independent field service company to provide that service to us going forward at $8,000, $75,000 a year, plus their overtime for their hourly rates.
Do you entertain a motion on that? Motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Potter, discussion, any non-involvement, say aye. Any opposed, stand approved. You want to go over your report? Anything you have to add, if you don't mind, I appreciate it.
Report for February, just a couple highlights, we had 3,110 wireless 911 calls, as you can see, that continues to grow wider than the wireline, 911 calls at 1,047. We had only one text 911 message last month, that was actually a test that we had done internally to make sure it was working, because we didn't get any, so. Emergency calls answered within 10 seconds, we had a dip, went down to 80%, our goal is to get up to 90 on that, that's largely because of our cross-training and being short of staff. Push-to-talks on the system-wide, 416,265, and a lot of hours of transmit time and telephone time, as usual, so. Management activity for the month, it's a pretty busy month, had a lot of meetings that I attended, had a lot of consortium work, one big thing, let's see, I have stuff further. CAD, spent a bunch of time working on that, we are at the end of rolling out law enforcement mobile data, which is a good thing, we're getting all the agencies up functional on that at this point in time, they're actually starting to use it, which is a good thing, and utilizing the resources that are available in their vehicle, which is what we're trying to do. Our next step is to start working towards EMS, which we're going to start training at the end of April, and allow them to do in-house training during May, goal is to go live on that June 4th. So making some really good progress on that as well. Next gen 911, there has been a lot of work lately that we've done on next generation 911, because on the New York State Working Group for that, and we've had, gone from every other week meetings to every week meetings now, to go over the New York State Plan Development for that particular program. It's a good thing that we're involved with that, because I had pretty good insight on what that's going to look like when it comes out, so I'll be getting some more information as we lock that down, but, I mean, next generation, next generation 911 is better location for callers, you know, not only, you know, here you are on the map, but what height you're on the map, so are you on the second, third, fifth floor, and also the information being provided from the public on that initial 911 call, so we can have the ability to do video conferencing, video, you know, recorded media, pictures, stuff along those lines, so we can try and get some more detailed information to be able to pass along, or pass that media along to the first responders that are responding to the incident, depending what's going on. So, a lot of stuff there. And then attended LEPC, Fire Advisory Board, and also a public outreach training that the sort of city fire did, which was very good, of what to do before first responders arrive, so calling 911, what the services that we have to offer during that timeframe, and then, you know, some of the dealing, some of the safety things, and some of the medical stuff that, you know, laypeople can do prior to getting there with our help. So, it was very, very good.
It's called until help arrives.
Yep, very good program, so.
Okay, any questions for Kevin?
How far are we in the next gen?
Um, I mean, we're 100% enhanced 911 compliant, which we have been for quite a few years now. Next generation 911, there's the joke in the industry of what, what are we, when are we gonna start next gen? Well, some of the, some of the 911 centers out there, like Onondah County, they can actually accept picture messages and stuff now at this point in time, however, they don't have a way to tie it to their CAD incident, so it kind of goes into, you know, a shared drive more or less, that can be looked at if they have some time to look at that. We're looking at a whole, entire approach to try and, you know, get the, you know, that information where it's tied to the CAD incident, where a law enforcement user, you know, could be, you know, there's somebody that's, you know, barricaded themselves in a house, but somebody can take some pictures of what's going on there, we could actually take and put that on the CAD incident, and law enforcement would have that, that's, you know, surrounded the house and stuff along those lines. That, I don't think we're too far out from, I mean, you know, it's, the big thing with next generation 911 is it's a lot of money, it's very, very expensive. The interfaces, it's just software, but they charge, you know, a lot for software. So, we're trying to come up with something that's gonna, you know, work good for everybody across the entire state, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all project, because something that may work well for New York City, where they have 350 dispatchers for one particular channel, where we have seven or five sometimes, just, you know, to do everything, that same project wouldn't work for us, but trying to, you know, make it be a, you know, stageable, you know, type of project, so.
Interesting, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah, just one more question, Kevin. Consolidation.
Yep.
We still having those discussions, and what direction are we pushing for?
There's, there has been some discussions, I know currently Madison County, Onondah County are doing complete consolidation evaluation, doing a feasibility study on that. We've had discussions, and we still have the shared services grant that we have to explore the opportunity to be a backup center for some of our neighboring counties, and there's been discussions on, some discussions recently on trying to move in that direction, that either we could be a backup, or that we can use each other as a backup to try and fill the amount of time that there would be, pretty much an outage if one of the centers, you know, went completely dark from the time they went dark until they brought their backup center on. So trying to figure out which route makes the most sense, because there's an immediate need, and then there's a long-term need there, both make sense, it's trying to figure out the best way, technological and technologically and, you know, feasibly, what makes sense. Yep.
All right, anything more? Thank you, Kevin, you're ready to go. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the employment history of a particular person.
Or persons.
Or persons. Motion by legislator Trudell, second by legislator Klein, non-involvement, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session. All right, any other discussion, Richard, you were on the list.
Yeah, just a question, and again, I understand private industry is different, because you want people bringing private industry, because you don't absorb the attitudes, and the, they might be an experienced particular person, but they're not your person. Your person is the one you'd be training, and would have the mindset in of your DA's office. Now, maybe you don't have, maybe you don't have people that can train, I don't know that. I don't work in your office, and maybe that's why you feel uncomfortable.
Feeling comfortable in my work, or?
Training somebody.
Well, it's, I feel comfortable training people, and again, we have two very qualified young ladies that joined the office in January, fresh out of law school, and again, they're covering city court calendars, they're covering town court calendars, but they're very early in their career. And I guess the analogy I would draw, Richard, is it's like taking a student fresh out of medical school. If you could put them in a local practice, working with a primary care physician in a local office and doing that, and that's their training to get experience, but you're not gonna put them in a triple bypass surgery first day out of medical school. Well, covering felony cases and doing felony trials is the equivalent of the triple bypass surgery. Again, this candidate has done surgeries before, this surgeon, this candidate has done bypass surgeries before, different hospital, but those skills are transferable. He's developed skills that he can come in, and again, it's gonna take a little bit of training, learn our particular procedures and practices at this hospital, but he's gonna be able to do that pretty quickly, so that, you know, within, you know, four or five months, I need to give him a trial in county court, he's gonna be able to do that. Again, it would be basically malpractice to take a first-year medical student, have them do open-heart surgery. What'd be legal malpractice to take a new law school grad within six months, or even within two years, and say, "Let go do this felony trial." So, and again, we've got different people at different experience levels within the office, we got those two young ladies that just filled the two brand-new positions, we got a young lady who filled the position last summer, she's, basically, right out of law school, started with us in July, so now she's got six, seven months of experience, and she's learning great, and she's doing well, and then I've got some more experienced attorneys at the other end, and this is just trying to keep that balance of experienced and lesser experienced people, so we're not tipping too far the other way.
Any other discussion? I have a motion in a second on this, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? One opposed, and then passes. All right. We'll be right along. PS4 we've already handled, so we need to, at this time, I'd like to introduce another resolution, authorizing the addition of three correction officer sergeant positions. Sheriff, I don't know if you'd like to discuss them or not, or what you would like to do.
This just brings us in line with the requirements for the State Corrections Commission for minimum staffing. And as I said before, it may help with the CAT court at this point to have the additional staff.
Do you entertain a motion on this? Motion by legislator Potter, second by legislator Klein, I'd ask that the motion include a directive to, we had a budget amendment when this goes forward to finance personnel. How do you think, Richard? And how about you? What do you say? Okay. So we have the resolution as presented with a caveat of unamended, or a budget modification to be added when it goes to finance personnel. So any more discussion? Non-involvement, say aye. Any opposed? Stand approved. Okay. Moving right along on our agenda, I want to move into the EMO/EMS, which Curry and his excuse today, Renee's here to handle the EMO and EMS monthly report. And then on the other, we also have Lyle Robbins, our vice chair of MSAG, Emergency Medical Services Advisory Committee, okay. And he's got, has a little bit of discussion too, some of what's gonna be discussed between Renee's portion and Lyle's, I don't know how it shaped out at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock this morning with the budget, if, I don't know if you have any updates on that or not, so...
We'll tackle the EMO first.
Tackle the EMO, and then we'll move into that.
All right, everyone, thank you. So Director Curry did provide a summary for you in your report, so I'll just highlight a couple of things. The first item on your agenda, the county health department's medical countermeasure distribution exercise, I just want to connect the dots for somebody, maybe you might have seen something on the news about the cookie, the Gruype cookie distribution, so this was, we call it the cookie exercise, this was, this has gone, gained national attention for our public health department. If you ever get the opportunity to come out and see it, it's excellent. The intent of this exercise is that if we had to have a mass dispensing of medication, this would, this was a setup of how we would offload those materials, organize them, account for them, and then be able to move them out to certain locations, so if we had to have a point of distribution for medication, just how do we make sure that we're accounting for all of that material? A lot of places who participate in this, they go, they set up their station, and they don't actually do anything. So our public health department has taken it a step further in bringing in the partners, so we actually get to work together, emergency management, describe a highway department, police, so, and we actually move assets, and in this particular instance, it was Gruype cookies, but it's an excellent representation, and it really brings us all the way through the process, so we can, from start to finish, that included an escort to soon as we go, because that would be one of our close partner partners. So really, from start to finish, it gives us a good picture of how we would perform in the entire scenario, should we ever have to open up a medication point of distribution. So hats off to them, if you get the opportunity to come see it, please join us. Number two, the cybersecurity course, I can only tell you that those are absolutely fabulous. All of us in the room are the biggest risk toward cybersecurity, we are our biggest risk, so anything you can do to enhance your cybersecurity awareness is gonna be helpful to our workplace as well. The number six was another opportunity, we had to partner in an exercise for state health, these are important for us to participate in, eventually, we all have to do exercises, so eventually, you know, they come and support us as well. Our radiological specialists are very busy getting into the meat of their training for our, the outside off-site response agencies, last year, 1,300 people were trained. Number seven, I just wanted to draw your attention to 7A, the public session for the Hazard Mitigation Plan was going to be on March 27. Terry Bennett is the head of that Hazard Mitigation Plan, and she had some family issues, so we did have to reschedule that for April 17. So that is still forthcoming, it's not done yet. Number eight, I did mention this briefly last month, I believe my words were, "When all heck was breaking loose in the county," he put it in a much nicer manner, we did have a partial EOC activation during that storm, and, you know, our fire partners and our 911 operators were tremendous in handling those calls. We are expected to continue to see water rise until late May or mid-June, fortunately, we're not at the place where we were a couple years ago when we met at this time. Moving into EMS, the good news that I have for EMS today is that our EMT class just finished, all of our candidates who started this class were able, eligible to test, they took their final test Thursday, so we're waiting for the results. The regional EMS council meeting, I provided you with a lot of material this month, more than I typically do, and the overall reason for that is because I don't want you to be blindsided or surprised with where we could potentially be heading with EMS. and the overall reason for that is because I don't want you to be blindsided or surprised, um, with where we could potentially be heading with EMS. And this is, we've said on different occasions, this is a, a statewide issue. EMS is really, um, headed in a crisis situation. The latest of that was the potential Medicaid crossover, um, removal from the state budget. So, as of this morning, my understanding was that that is not, has not been removed, but it's not a done deal. So, in looking at what that potential crossover money means for our county, it's potentially a half million dollar decrease in revenue for our EMS agencies in this county. Um, so, in talking with Zach Mentor, for him, that means a sixteen-hour shift that would not be covered, as far as how much his budget is potentially going to be losing. So, you take one rig off the road for sixteen hours. Um, for some of our smaller agencies, it could be quite devastating. And so, I provided you a couple of instances, examples of EMS agencies who have had to close their doors because of financial issues. I brought to you before the staffing issues because of the salaries that our, our EMTs make, and our, their salaries are low because you can see the shortfall for Medicaid is a significant amount of millions. They don't get reimbursed, when the EMS goes out the door, they're automatically losing money. So, um, some people are, you know, of the mindset that, well, if one of our smaller agencies has to close its doors, it's okay, Mentor will pick it up. And I just want you to understand that Mentor has no obligation to come and to put a rig in that location. Um, they will likely respond from where their general territory is, and for some people, that can mean significant response times. Um, and sometimes the outcome of significant response times is not good. I just had a person from where I used to live contact me, um, a friend of hers passed away, um, they called the ambulance. That ambulance wasn't available, they called another agency, and that, they were on scene in twenty-two minutes. That's really a good response time if you have to call a neighboring agency. Unfortunately for this gentleman, um, he passed away and went to the hospital. So, I just don't want you to be blindsided by what potentially could be coming. Our ambulance agencies are, are struggling, um, in general, to make the bottom line be not in the red. So, um, the other issue that was significant for EMS is, um, we started a conversation in January with Oswego City Fire, who is the other correspondent for EMS education in the county, currently goes to Oswego County EMS and Oswego City. We had conversations with them about would they be willing to teach EMS classes in the county? And, um, before, previously, previously, it's been kind of silos, we took care of everything in the county, they took care of everything in the city. And they are willing to work with us and willing to run some courses, they're going to charge for that. And they have to charge for that to remain solid. They can't make money on it, but the reimbursement from the state for EMS education does not cover the cost. So, they're looking at charging a thousand dollars per original EMT student and five hundred dollars for a, a certified first responder course. So, that would be passed on to anyone, an individual who wants to get trained to go to a job, uh, volunteer fireman, um, somebody who wants to, uh, take it just to, because they want to. Um, so, the fire agencies are quite concerned about what that would mean in their budgets. Um, because a lot of their budgets cannot absorb a thousand dollars a person for training, it would eat up the majority of the training cost. So, we have been going around and talked to fire advisory board, talked to, um, some of the battalion meetings, I have a few more to go. They have some significant concerns, and, um, the EMS advisory council is also concerned about the direction of EMS education. Previously, the EMS education cost has been absorbed by the radiological funding. It's not part, it's not supposed to be part of that, it's not required to be part of that. And with the changing radiological situations and funding, they can't afford to be anymore. So, that's kind of where we are. On, I guess, a little bit more of a positive note before I take, um, questions about either of those two things. Stop the Lead is going very well, I had the opportunity to train a couple deputies from the sheriff's office so they can do some internal training, and I had the opportunity to train, uh, probation officers as well. So, really, we continue to keep on rolling with that. So, I'm glad to see that that's continuing to progress, and our kids are out the door, which is where we want them to be. About five hundred people to date that I've trained, so, um... All right, I'll take, oh, do you want Lyle to go?
Well, I guess I'll have Lyle go, because if there are any questions, maybe he'll be able to answer some too pertaining to the, um,
Okay.
So, hi, man. Uh, Lyle, floor chairs.
My name's Lyle Robbins, I'm the vice chair of the MSAC committee. We're the advisory committee set up for EMS, and everybody assumes that EMS is just a transporting ambulances. No, um, there's only six of us transporting agencies in the county now. Um, back when I first came to this county, there was close to twenty ambulances serviced in this county. So, we're down to six. And one of them is a part, two of them are part-time, one of them is, um, Sebakt, which is a volunteer, um, on the college, and the other one is a part-time, uh, which is the city of Oswego, they're part-time as of right now. So, we don't just represent the ambulance, we represent anybody who is funded part of the chain of emergency response. Uh, we look at the dispatcher education to the first responders education that we see in the volunteer fire service, um, to the career firefighters that we have both in the city of Oswego and the fire brigades of the Upland, so we probably represent them. Our concerns that we have is that, um, there's demonstration and a look of lack of support for EMS coming out of the county legislators. Not necessarily out of this committee, but this in general. Um, some of it's a lack of education because people don't really understand what EMS is about. They figure they call nine-one-one, they're going to get somebody to respond to them and take care of their needs at the other end of the call. Um, they don't know, they, even though they might have had a little bit of training in high school or whatever, they really don't have a big sense of what is the backstory of EMS. Um, and by removing some of the educational, um, training monies, educational commitments of this agency, uh, that you're demonstrating is that you, you're kind of falling into the same lack of support. Um, the other thing is, as I said, the thousand dollars per EMT is, she's spoken to, some of our agencies just cannot afford that. Ultimately, somebody's going to have to come up with this money, and I agree with the city of Oswego, um, fire department that, um, training EMTs costs about a thousand dollars per person, and there's no way to get around that, and I, and I agree with that. Um, but the reimbursement issue of where's a hundred and, um, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars going to come from and how we're going to do this whole reimbursement? People like Redfield, um, Richland, um, Orwell, the smaller communities, if they talk about sending six people, that's six thousand dollars out of their twenty-five thousand dollar budget. And they still have to do firefighting. And these same individuals are giving up their time to do the training. Um, so, it's up a hard press to be a fire chief and one of these agencies to go, yeah, we can't send you because we don't have the money. Well, I'm here to serve the community, um, yeah, well, you got to come up with your own money to do that. Well, that, you know, even makes it harder for volunteers. So, we have to come up with some ways and means they able to manage that. There's grant money, there, there's discussion of they able to come up with grant money, but it's also been brought to my attention that the individuals that are managing this program right now do not want to be involved in EMS anymore because they have other things that are more pressing to them. And that's all fine and good, but we each have our responsibilities, and you're managing those responsibilities now, we probably should continue on with that until there's somebody else that's going to be able to take over it. Um, just to give you back a little bit of history, I've been around the block a few times. Um, EMS was over in DOH back in the days of So Pierce, um, back in the eighties. Um, when that happened, they ran into problems, the DOH ran into problems managing it, and they said, we can't manage this anymore. And the EMO ended up taking it over because they had the ways and means and the way able to do it. And I'm, I'm seeing this repeat pattern happening again, and we're back into the same hole because EMO cannot manage it. So, we have to be able to look down the road further and look at that. Each ambulance service, fire departments, we all have our problems, just like you do. We have unfunded mandates that we have to maintain, and, and it's costing us money. Um, the fire departments now, volunteer fire departments have come up with ways, this is their sexual harassment, their workplace violence, and all these other trains that are outside of their normal firefighting trains and EMS training. They're losing contract money. Uh, I, I'm going to be leaving out of here and go and visit my town board because they want to talk to me about contract money. They're going to jettison my contracts for North, um, North Shore Ambulance. And I'm going to be going to them and going, has it four o'clock this morning? They're still negotiating in the public health arena about Medicaid Medicare supplements that were, tended to be given to the ambulance service to include the crossover. Uh, and we, we still might be losing this, we don't know, because you don't know how budgets work, negotiations at the very end. Um, for North Shore Ambulance, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars on my budget, and I'm programmed it. That is the opponent of one-page provider at the basic EMT level. Then I'm going to have to figure out how I'm going to manage for that money. Ultimately, if I was living in the perfect world, I can go to the town and go, I need twenty-eight thousand dollars more in my budget. Can you see how well that's going to go over when I do that to the town? There's ambulance services in our district right now that if you sit there and talk to, um, town boards, they're being presented with that situation. The ambulance service is walking out, putting their hands open, going, I need X amount of dollars more. And the towns are going, I don't know where am I going to get that money? So, the biggest issue is, is that we keep on pushing the cost, we're pushing the cost down to the people that really not afford to pay and recover the cost. Ultimately, it's going to end up on the taxpayer somewhere somehow. If it stays in the county, it's a little bit bigger budget, which I understand that. Um, but if you push it all the way down to the townspeople or the people that are actually doing volunteering to cover their costs for the educational program, we're going to have problems there. And the whole thing about this Medicaid Medicare and the Medicaid supplements that we're supposed to be receiving, that we're supposed to be receiving for over the last five years, that's being taken away from us. Um, the number, like I said, the twenty-eight thousand dollars I can speak to for North Shore can actually decrease to almost forty-five thousand dollars if we lose the supplements also that we supposedly promised to have. That's significant for a non-for-profit voluntary ambulance service. And, uh, no, because, just throw it out there, no, but when I spoke to Norm, he's talking about somewhere around fifty-four thousand dollars up there. That he's going to lose. So, and then we have this whole burden of, you know, I'm trying to get volunteer EMTs to work, you know, there when there are in seven instances that we support you through your EMT class, now I'm going to have to pay quarter thousand dollars and come up with two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per person and depend on you to be true then. My goal in retention is to retain people in our service, in our community. So, that's where we're at. And this affects the volunteer firefighters. Don will attest, most volunteer fire departments are per se rescue response, but they do occasional firefighting. This is the significant hit on that.
If I might clarify, I got two-hundred-and-twenty-five that he was talking about. So, if a student passes the certification exam, an agency can go to the state and request reimbursement at the EMT level. It's a maximum of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. So, if a fire agent paid a thousand dollars to take the class, when the student successfully completes it and gets certified, they can request seven-seventy-five, so then it would be an hour, that was, he was referring to that.
Yeah, it was pocket, it's no reimbursement.
If a person does not successfully pass, then there's no reimbursement capabilities. Um, and I just wanted, one of the things I did not mention, and this is one of the areas where we really need your assistance, is that EMS is not an essential service in New York State. And I, I, you can look at Kevin Pooley's report this month, thirteen hundred fire calls, sixteen hundred EMS calls. So, there, you know, fire is an essential service, law enforcement is an essential service, EMS is not. And I think New York State really needs to look at that, and we need local law, our local legislators to be on board with helping us to, to look at that because we could potentially be eligible for additional grant money. Right now, there is very, very little that's available to EMS for grant funding.
So, to Kevin.
Thanks, Sheriff. Um, what would it take to get it to be an essential service? I mean, it'd have to go through Albany and it'd have to be passed by a law and all that sort of stuff. I can't believe they're going to say no to that.
It's been in legislation for many years, it just has not been, um, important enough.
To push it through.
And we can see how the, the governor's current stance on EMS is, he's looking at splashing millions of dollars, and two agencies right outside of Albany have gone under in the last couple of months. So, I'm not sure he's really, he's either, I'm not sure what his personal stance on it, but his recommendations are not indicating that he's highly supportive of EMS.
Have you tried for grants?
So...
Have you think, now, there's a Chinaman service here, here in the county that does things for the county. You know what I'm saying, Chinaman, maybe, because, have you applied for a grant to help pay for the, um, uh, maybe a s- one schooling or two schoolings a year or whatever?
So, we just met with Oswego City in January, and we started to formulate a plan. We met with the directors of operations in March, we're meeting with the instructors, Oswego County EMT instructors tonight. So, um, we, we're moving through this process to see how we can create a more cohesive, um, education program. So, we're not at the point yet where we...
Could ask for grants, yeah, okay.
But that is on the radar.
That actually was a discussion we had at fire advisory, Brad and myself, Lawrence and Trudell and myself were there, and that's something we brought forward with Strategic, who is, uh, helping with grant writing for the county. We could possibly look at having a pool of money that could then be administered out to scholarships or things of that nature. For say, Orwell has six, maybe they get four scholarships to go, and they have to pay for it, it'd be a lot better than six thousand, two thousand. So, um, you know, we got a lot of discussions that have to occur on that, and that is something we're looking at.
Good, that's true.
Biggest issue that we're concerned about is that, uh, what we're looking at now is the stopgap, the term. Um, there's long-winded wheels that can change real fast. City could be very supportive today, but all of a sudden, the city will say, no, we're not supportive. Um, it could be just one person in an outside agency that can change everything. I have twenty-five years of experience of working in the federal service and working with committees, and we set up co-ops and stuff like that. We worked for three or four years, everything's going great, and all of a sudden, this Colonel will walk in and go, we're done, thank you very much, and now we're scrambling to pick up the program because this outside person said, no, we don't want to support it anymore for whatever reasons why, very deligent reasons to, I just don't want to be here anymore.
Got it.
Yeah, I mean, this is something we, we talked about at fire advisory board, we're talking about at battalion meetings. Um, we've done battalion four, uh, the next three, or come up in the next three weeks. And, and like Lyle said, this is something we need to address long-term. We're talking with the city of Oswego Fire Chief, um, he's not going to be there for, he's very much in favor of this. He's made some great changes in his Oswego Fire Department and done a lot of the things, um, in support of the county and the neighboring townships. But like he said, the city cannot do this training and lose money. And, believe me, a thousand dollars per person for EMS training, for EMT training is gracious. Um, there's, I guarantee you, there's some costs there that are being absorbed by the city because it should be more like between twelve-fifteen, fifteen-hundred a person probably, if you take everybody's time into account. But, if he retires next year and the city elects a new mayor, we could be out the lunch. So, we need a long-range plan. I, I thought we had a good working plan, um, understand the budget concerns and stuff, but, um, we need to do something long-range, we need to have a program put together. Uh, I think the county needs to be on top of it, not let our correspondence ship go, um, because we need to have control of it. Right now, yes, we have a short-term, um, plan, but I think we need to keep moving forward and figure out the best way to do it, um, and how we can fund it. Grant money is great, when we can get it. But, I mean, from somebody that's this deep in grants, um, it takes, I have one person that works twenty hours a week in my office, and that's all he does is grants, pretty much, to keep up with and to do the grant reporting, to find them, to write them, to monitor them. There's a lot more hidden cost to getting a grant to pay for something than just saying, let's go and help try to get grant. And so far, from what I've seen, there is nothing out there... And so far, from what I've seen, there is nothing out there from this.
We are gonna apply for our core sponsorship renewal. That's due in June, so we are planning to maintain our core sponsorship. If I were to offer the training, I would have to charge as well, do exactly what the city's doing, so it doesn't change it for the end user because EMO can't absorb the cost anymore.
Do you need to clarify that the EMO has been absorbing the cost, but using radiological money, which is improper, so that's, that's part of what has facilitated this? We've done it for a number of years, but in the future.
One of the big issues, I just wanna make sure we all understand that, this county EMS is the gateway for a lot of our people that get into medical services. We want to create an atmosphere that people feel safe here. On the law enforcement side of the house, that they get a police officer in a timely fashion, or a fire, that they get a fire truck there in a timely fashion. We wanna make sure we get trained people to their side. The outcome of somebody being trained and interacting with somebody in the first five, six minutes of their event does affect the outcome on the other end in public health, and this, what county legislators have to deal with also, is that if we can get somebody into the proper care properly, and the first responders make the right calls and make the right decisions, and a lot of people there, we can take somebody who's having a heart attack, and they come back and become a functional provider of tax revenue, living in the community, saying that this community is safe and well-protected. As opposed to if somebody doesn't get that care in a timely fashion, did they come back to the community and now are part of the public health needs? And have to be supported by that.
Oh, true.
So we need to keep that respected, that some of the costs might have to be eaten by the county, because, you know, we're trying to make it better for the people that are living in this county.
Well.
One concern I have with the classes and who's putting money into it is that the people that are in the classes, I hear over and over again that we have people in, and then they get the classes, they get certified, and then they leave to another county. Is there anything that when we give these classes, that they have to at least utilize what training they've had in our county, rather than just come get certified, and now I'm gonna go and go someplace else?
That's the majority of the makeup of this class, is that this particular class, we have a lot who are gonna go on to other healthcare professions. So we, and a lot of those have requirements for patient contact hours, so we might see them for a short time. We have a large group right now that, from the northern part of the county, that are volunteer firemen that want to take this course. So it's kind of an ebb and flow with, if we're taking them from a volunteer fire agency, then they're gonna be giving back to their community. The way that it's structured right now, I can't charge more than, if I'm seeking reimbursement as the county, I cannot charge more for an outside individual than for the individual that I'm seeking reimbursement from, from the state. So I can't charge you seven seventy-five because you're from, from a volunteer fire agency, and then charge you a thousand because you're private. That's against state rule. So we do not have any requirement that when they take our course, they provide in the county. If volunteer fire companies send them, they can have agreements with the student, individual, that they would provide service or, you know.
But it's a volunteer service. And I've managed that several times where I, hey, I'm sending you to this class, you gotta sign this document. And they go, well, I'm a volunteer. And that's, and where can you argue that point? They're volunteer, they're time. And if they decide to volunteer for three months in my service as a volunteer, and then go someplace where they can actually make money off from this training, I can't, what can I do to stop them? They came with the idea that they're volunteer. I have a lot more power, a lot more authority over my career values, because it's a career job. But when it comes to volunteers, in the state of New York, we're really clear about this. There's no monetary agreement, and I can't use a class as a monetary.
We can't take their card either. You know, if they're on the dive team, we can take their dive equipment. We can't take their EMS card. They're free to go anywhere in New York State.
Yeah, but I can't use a class as an enticement to a volunteer and take it away from them, or say, no, because you don't volunteer anymore. I can't do that. That's considered monetary.
We have a lot that we need to, I think, talk about with EMS. I wanna, I feel like the Debbie Downer of the day, with so much great EMS news, but really, people need to just understand what the state of EMS is in our county and in our state.
And nationwide. Because three far articles just hit my, Michigan is running into the same issue. Pennsylvania, just down under, they're running into bigger issues. There's whole big townships that have lost their whole EMS overnight.
Well, I appreciate. Yeah, I'm worried.
I was just gonna say, from the coroner's perspective, just to add to the conversation, we've been seeing more and more people with, you know, parent heart attacks going in, going over Oswego Hospital. A lot of individuals haven't been received. And to your point of, if those individuals are saved, they come back and they're functioning. Again, if they're not saved, they become a cost off to the county coroner's base, which is at minimum thirteen fifty for adoption, plus the transport, the stockpiling. So we're talking a cost of two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars for every person who's not saved. So as part of that conversation, just keep that in the back of your mind too. What it's worth.
There's nothing more. I wanna thank you, Lyle, for coming in. I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you as this progresses forward in NSAC and Renee and the fire coordinator and all of fire advisory kind of brainstorm through this. I know I speak the most on this committee when I say, let us know what we can do here. I know it's kind of dismal today, but hopefully the future.
Well, we're doing really, we're getting ambulances on the road, guys. We are answering calls. So it's not like we're falling apart. It's not like Franklin County that's lost their ambulance service. We are getting the reach on the road, and we're answering people.
Absolutely.
So. Anybody on the committee, most, a lot of the people I recognize, I know somebody can get ahold of me real fast. But my number is available. Terry's has it. Definitely Don and Renee can get ahold of me on a pretty fast way, so don't be afraid to contact me.
Thanks for your time today. Just going back, I need to, when you passed the resolution adding the one position and deleting two positions in the sheriff's department after we came out of executive session, who made the motion? Who made the second on that? If it's anybody, who made it? Let's say the podder made the motion, let's say the client seconded it. And then everybody was in favor. Resolution two? Resolution two, or is it the, one, asking for the change of the five hundred C corrections law. Anybody remember making a motion for that? Well, let's revote it back over again. I'll entertain a motion to send a request to the state officials asking for a change to a corrections law, section five hundred C, to permit detention in the correctional facility. Motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Kessler. Any discussion? Any not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. So moving right back into reports. Fire coordinator, you have a report?
Good afternoon. In the essence of time, you've got a copy of my monthly report. We've been very busy. I included a list of just some of our activities. We actually had a staff meeting Monday morning and realized we start our live fire training summer tough in three weeks. So I wish the snow would go away so we could work on. But anybody has any questions, let me know. But in the essence of time, all I got.
Okay. Probation. I know you have a quick update on raise the age, and you wanted to briefly discuss your CVI grant.
Not a lot, but I had contacted OCSF a couple days ago, and they're still working on our plan, saying it's still under review, so they've got everything they need from us, so it's waiting. The numbers, the arrests for the sixteen-year-olds are still strangely low compared to where they were. I think we're down roughly fifty percent with stats like that, so I don't know if they'll pick up. Possibly the seventeen-year-olds get in October, might go up a little bit. As far as the CVI grant, we're running two groups in jail for change right now. One's a widget zones group, which is going pretty well, so.
Reg?
I have two brief things, if I may.
I can't hear you.
I have two brief items to report, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
First is, my office conducted training on raise the age with Fulton and Oswego Sheriff's Office. We've conducted two sessions each, which should help the numbers. And DA's office attended training on that, and then conducted separate training after the training on raise the age. The second thing is, I wanna report that on March twenty-eighth, the Hunter District of York, United States District Court, decided a case in county's favor and in favor of the state EMT commissioners entitled Stephen Burdick versus Oswego County, involving a two thousand nine traffic stop. I have the copies of the decision. If anybody wants it, it's thirty pages. So. What do you do? This, are you reading?
All right. We also have a monthly, or a report from search and rescue.
I'll just give a few highlights. Thank you. Since the report was submitted, we've actually had five notifications. We had one yesterday morning involving an eight-year-old in Fulton, which was resolved within about half an hour. The team was activated on March sixteenth in the city of Oswego involving the search for a lost eleven-year-old. And that had a good outcome, thankfully. The child was found on the farm. As a result of search and rescue, providing the family information about Project Lifesaver, the child was now being served by Project Lifesaver, which is really effective in helping to locate lost people, especially people with disabilities or autism or other conditions. We're really busy with training. We have a presentation coming up to the Cub Scouts in Sandy Creek for the Pubertry Program, which is the accredited curriculum by the National Association of Search and Rescue Teams. And we just found out last week that we received a grant from Stewart's Foundation to purchase their curriculum, the National Association's curriculum, and also a portable projector that we can use to do training on, you know, the that. That teaches kids our basic survival skills and information on what to do if they are lost. And then we have an eight-hour class coming up at the end of April, Lost Person Behavior, and that goes over characteristics of what people do when they're lost. And then it'll review some of the statistics and new information that's become available over the last couple years. And also, the team had the stock that we last put, the name and stuff.
Any questions? Make sure you pass along or continue things and bring them over. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Legislator Potter makes a motion, second by legislator Klein. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?